Down in the southeast corner, there is a fuel station for the police cars. And the access drives are both designed for larger trucks from the state highway back to the impound yard for a lowboy type tow truck or to the cul-de-sac we have on this side where you come in, spin around and come back around so that a fuel truck can fill up the fuel station. We split the two in the back because there's a large swath of wetlands right through the middle of our site. So we're trying to continue to keep water coming to the wetland area, but we're trying to get the water around the building and back down towards the highway. So we're trying to do a lot of different things at once. As far as stormwater management for the new building, we have an underground detention system out in, near the highway. This underground detention system's like, almost like plastic containers underground that are going to store the water and release it at a slow rate. We also have three what they call managed release concepts, which is pretty much a rain garden with a slow release. And we have three of them across the site. The reason we're doing managed release concepts is because the site is pretty saturated, does not infiltrate, so that's our other alternative to submit to the DEP or to the conservation district. We are permitting the impacted wetlands. We do have HOPs submitted to PennDOT for both the access drives. The plans have been into the conservation district. We have an administrative complete letter. We have utilities coming into the site. We have water and sewer across the road. Both the water and sewer authority would like us to bore underneath the highway and get the HOP. Both of them have been submitted to PennDOT. Yes, that's the gist of the site and I can go in more detail on each specific thing we're here for tonight. First one on the agenda was the lot consolidation plan. So as it stands now, there's two lots pretty much that comprise the property. And they're generally about five acres each. So what we'd like to do to just make this one parcel, we're just going to consolidate the two and remove the middle line. So that's what we're asking for, for the consolidation plan tonight. If you have any questions on that, I can go into the next.
We want to take one step at a time here.
Yeah, let's do the subdivision.
Yeah, so we'll give the subdivision taken care of and then we'll mark, go on to the next. Any questions or for the subdivision?
Just one question, demolition again. Did you highlight some structures that are going to be demolished on there?
There will be structures demolished. There's, there's a, this is the rent, you can see it better here, Recycle America, two buildings.
Yeah.
They'll be coming down with this project.
Are there any residual chemicals there on that side?
There, there was some, I know there's some hazardous materials in the one building that we've documented that will be supplied to the contractor when he bids it, make sure they're removed and disposed of properly. And there was a soil stain around, outside the one building, but I don't think it got into any of the groundwater if I remember for sure.
Okay.
But all this is being taken care of with reports.
Okay, sounds like you're on top of it.
Yep.
Okay.
There's also an existing well that's going to be abandoned per DEP criteria.
Any other questions from the board? Can I call for a motion?
I'm making a motion that we approve the consolidation plan.
Subdivision.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
The second one's our land development plan. And I showed you the, pretty much the construction plan so you could see it a little better, but we developed the plans per your ordinance, the smaller size. We have a signature page, the land development plan, and then we have notes also with this. We did receive some comments. I can go down through the comments with you if you'd like.
So do you have?
Sure. Okay. Please show on the plan the uses and square footages of the building. We have not resubmitted the comments, addressing the comments yet, because one of the comments was the site lighting plan. And we're not quite finished with that yet, so I want to get everything back to Matt one night.
Okay.
This floor is a...
So you don't have any design of that at all?
Photometric to me, I can tell.
Yes.
Not, not submitted to the township.
Okay. Have any ideas what you're contemplating? I mean, just concerned, seems like it's been a hot...
Yeah.
...issue for us to have down lighting instead of...
Well, it won't be spread out. It'll be down lighting. I'm not the electrical engineer. Our building department was just authorized to move forward with the finalizing of the design of the building. And our electrical engineer is actually working on the site lighting. I was hoping he'd have it for me today, but he's not quite finished. But yeah, we, we understand the shielding. We see the photometrics that we need in different areas. Won't go across the property. We'll make sure as well take care of it. So as far as the comment, first comment said, "Show the plan uses and square footage." We added the square footage here on the left-hand side of the notes. Sixty-three thousand five hundred square feet is what the building is going to be. And then we were asked to put more on the usage. Within the existing land use, we have a recycling facility and then we spelled out more of what the police facility is going to have. And I guess I could read some of them here. Police facility offers firearm range, locker and conference rooms, holding processing areas, lobby, evidence storage, fuel station, staff parking, impound yard, wires, communications, antenna, and vehicle maintenance repair. All uses needed for emergency response and welfare of the community.
What about local security neighbors or whatever? That somebody gets away or, I don't understand, maybe I guess the whole volume of people in and out of that place as far as a security issue for the neighborhood?
So you want to talk about that a little bit?
Well, I mean, as our building is now, which is very ancient, I mean, if you saw those security things under it, you'd quite laugh. My house is probably more secure. But since I've been there, I've been there for seventeen years, we've had, I think, three since I've been there, three people that have gotten away, ran across the parking lot and then met the blacktop. And so, I mean, could it happen? Hundred percent doesn't happen. But when they come in, you know, we're going to have a Sallyport. Sallyport comes in, it's locked down. You know, we don't have one now, but it's locked down. Everything you go through is, is just egress in, you're not coming back out. So there's checks and balances with, with getting in and out. Like I said, if you saw, we're operating now and with the numbers I told you now, it's completely, we're about forty years behind in technicality, so.
Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Comment two was about the site lighting and I said that's on his way. Was hoping to have that tonight. Off-street loading space, I talked with Matt a little bit about this, a twelve-foot wide by fifty-foot, fifty-five foot long by fourteen foot high. We're not foreseeing any big deliveries. It's not going to be tractor-trailer deliveries. It's just going to be box trucks, dump off supplies and stuff, so we did not account for that space. We don't believe we need it.
We've been assured that fire chief has looked at this to make sure that fire trucks can get in there. You know, it looks okay. Is that what?
Have you done turning templates for larger vehicles?
Yeah, there's a, because of the impound yard, we had to run a lowboy back through this entrance and spin around and come back out. Likewise, down here, we would put a pretty large-sized fuel truck and come in, spin around the cul-de-sac and come back out.
Okay, so fire truck could get in. I mean, if there was a problem at a fueling station, you know, something like that, a fire truck could get in there easily enough.
Yeah, these two, these two drives are going to be heavy-duty. Prepare for that. Property corners and markers and monuments, not shown on the plan, need to be shown on the plan and set in the field. We've added those to the plan and I've talked with Matt about that. We're going to have, there's two missing. We're going to have that incorporated in the construction documents that the contractor's going to actually have his surveyor set the two when he goes out there to stake it out. Suits planning is provided to the township. I've obtained all the signatures from the various authorities, the city. I just received the health department, I just received the county, and I believe I sent a package out to the township.
It's actually on the agenda for tonight.
Oh, it is? Okay. So we're getting closer. We're almost, almost through all that too. Copy of the HOP will be submitted to some of township, agreed?
If we can hold off with the ingredients-based comments for the next gen item.
Okay. Okay. The modifications to stormwater ordinance shall be noted on the plan. We've added those to the land development plan and also to the stormwater management plan. What they mainly are is the one, since we're, we're pretty tight north to south trying to get everything fit, one of our rain gardens is within twenty-five foot of this corner of the building. It's like twenty foot to the top of it. So we're asking for a modification of five feet in that form. The second one is section seven oh one B six with the installation of, okay, this is as part of this rain garden. Since I said we have fluctuating groundwater levels and this rain garden actually does not have a two-foot separation from the groundwater according to Geotech drilling logs. It only has one foot, which is okay for DEP, but not pre-ordinance. So that's the only one of the three that we're encroaching within one foot instead of two-foot pre-ordinance. The other two do meet that criteria because the groundwater is not quite as deep and we were able to get them a little higher down there. The last one is, oh, the pipe. Your ordinance requires that there be a foot of cover on top of the pipe from the, measuring from the subgrade elevation down. Well, our pavement section is pretty thick and we're meeting the manufacturer since we don't have a whole lot of fall. We tried to raise the building up, we can't get it up more or else we're going to have problems with, with access as far as not having handicapped accessibility. We try to maintain that throughout. We will not maintain one foot below subgrade, but we will maintain one foot below the top of, or the pavement elevation. So we'll be into some of the subbase instead of down ending the subgrade. That's allowed per the manufacturer, it's just a modification to your ordinance.
I think that's, covers what we need to cover. The rest of the comments are technical in nature.
Yeah, well, the next one might...
That might change quite a bit, yeah.
Well, the next one, I was looking at that a little closer. The time of concentration, five minutes by ordinance. The TR-55 manual says the minimum TC should be point one and all my computer software run it at point one. So that's in conflict to that by one minute. So I guess if we have to make a modification, I ask for a modification in the ordinance that, I guess is the direction we need to go.
Okay. What's the impact?
Typically, it wouldn't be much of an impact at all. Usually one minute doesn't account for too much, but I, if I remember the report, there's a few of the, the storms, like the hundred-year storm and the fifty-year storm are pretty close. Because like, I think with the, the lower storms, you're, you have quite a bit of room. But the higher storms are close, like the, the amount pre-existing and post are so close that, that one minute might actually fluctuate the, the post to be above the pre.
We're about three CFS for the fifty and four CFS for the hundred.
Yeah, and with a site that big, it might have an impact. I'll have to review it more in depth. But per the ordinance, the minimum's five minutes. Basically, the time of concentration, took a little lesson here. So it, it's the time for a raindrop, like say the, bust out the pointer here. Completely hypothetical, I'm just going to, so let's say the discharge point's right here.
Yep.
So the time of concentration is the time it takes for a raindrop landing as far away from that point as possible to go, travel through the site and make it to that point. So typically, pre-construction, the site is meadow, woods, grass, so it could take like thirty minutes plus maybe to reach there. And that is the time when that last raindrop there is there, every other raindrop falling on that site would have already reached that point. So that's the time of the maximum concentration of flow going out of that site. So pre-existing, a raindrop can meander and go there. Post-construction, the raindrop falls here, goes across some grass, hits the pavement, falls into a catch base and then boom, it's over to the end. And that could be anywhere from five minutes minimum to ten. It's always less.
Okay.
So that's how that plays in. So the lower your time of concentration, the more flow you're going to end up at the discharge point and that, that point.
Okay. And we're only a minute, the delta is...
Yeah, but if you're over, we're looking at a twenty-acre site, that one minute for twenty acres is, it could add up. So I'll look into it and I, I'll make my recommendation.
Not all the drainage areas are...
Yeah.
Real small. There's only like two drainage areas that are, hit the pavement, go. The other ones are still coming from off-site. We're still maintaining a lot of that to the wetland area and it takes some time to go to the wetland area and the other ones going in a channel down below the site. So that will take some time. The ones on-site are quicker.
So I can't make a determination tonight. I'll have to look at the, the report again and look at the drainage areas a little more in depth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Did you want me to go through any evidence?
No.
No?
As far as the land development plan, then I need to, anybody have any more questions or?
Couple quick ones.
Sure.
Is the, is the crime lab coming up and is there going to be any modifications for helicopter?
The crime lab is not in this project. The helipad, the cul-de-sac serves many purposes and one of them may be the helipad. It's not really set in stone, but it's sized to do a lot of different things.
And that would be just on demand, the serpent man, the serpent dying?
Correct, sir. As far as the, the labs, that's been brought up multiple times and the way we always say is like, we're a police station, that's a lab. Like it's, it's a different entity. It's like DEP versus country fair. You know what I mean? So as far as them coming up, we don't know, we highly doubt it. Everything we are doing is for PSB two D here, so, you know, could it happen? I don't know because we're all a commonwealth, but as far as this plan, it's just for us. As far as the helicopter, really the helicopter, I would say it probably comes up. It does probably come up about twelve times a year. We'll do community events, people come up, they see it, but I mean, is it going to turn into an airport? No, but it does come up. I mean, right now, it usually lands on the Erie Boys High School, Elementary School. There's just a field and lands right next to the field. That's where, you know, we always told the school fire, say, hey, oh yeah, we know, like there'll be kids out there playing and not saying helicopter, helicopter, no fans or buzz, but I mean, it's not like we're turning it into international too, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Can I call for a motion?
Quick question.
Is there any other development planned in that area currently around this site?
Well, we have, we have the fire department here. This is Lord here. This is currently a vacant parcel. It's on the market. It's a residential zone parcel, so there's a possibility that there could be a residential subdivision. We've heard rumors of possible development there, but nothing has been set in stone. So just, I would take it as there's a possibility that you could have kind of like a Hammond Village-type subdivision there. It wouldn't be like a Trails of Five Points because our ordinance doesn't permit that anymore. Thank you. You're welcome.
So do you want to start that with a, with a motion? Guess not. No, 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 sorry. There's, there's just a lot there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of, there is, unknowns that we're not, that we're usually anticipating.
Yeah, and we've got a laundry, we've got a laundry list of things that have to...
Well, and, and we could, we don't have the photometrics. If you guys want to look into that more in depth before you, you make a motion, we could table it until next month and take a look at the photometrics next month.
Yeah, the photometric piece is a pretty big piece. And, I mean, it's, this is one of those situations to me anyway that, you know, everything is in line, except that and some other, you know. I don't think we have any other major concerns about this, certainly not. It's just that, that photometric piece is a big, but I'm, I'd like to know what else, what everybody else thinks. I mean, if, is the photometric going to pass? I, I, I mean...
Yeah, we're going to...
Right, I mean, you know, so if it's a, I don't know that it's that much of a gamble, is it?
There has to be a certain amount of...
Security?
Lighting for security.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I don't think it's going to be that fine line for them to dance on, that they're going to need it. And the adjacent neighbors, the fire department, which undoubtedly we appreciate, sometimes some lighting when those guys come in.
Yeah.
Or if they have late events, people leaving their, their social center, I think it's going to be a benefit for some extra light. I don't think it's got to be, it's not going to be anything like some of the car dealers.
Right, I think, yeah.
They need that security. They need that.
Oh yeah, we'll point that out.
We, we won't be putting any light over the firehouse unless they come in personally requesting. We'll keep it to the property.
Well, I mean, just the ambient, ambient light for, for, you know, people leave their social hall out, it might...
I think that's the easy part. The residential's kind of the kicker.
Yeah.
To me, because that's when that thing comes into play and that's why I asked the question, you know, because again, we're, we're, we're looking at these things and they're, you know, want to be supportive, but I want to be mindful of with the adjacent owner, what may occur there too. Just, just something to think about.
Is this going to be signed tonight anyway?
No, there's a few of the certificates that need to be revised on the first page, so.
I'd like to make a motion that, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until next month.
The land development plan? Because it's early...
Yes, the land development, okay, right. Land development, based on some outstanding items and we want to get it right.
Good.
And since we weren't going to sign it tonight anyway, I don't think that it's a net loss.
Yeah, we got to get the owner to sign it all anyhow before we...
What's your proposed move in?
They're trying to move in as quickly as possible.
Is that next week or next year or the year after?
The, the, the big issue, I guess, on this site, or maybe not the issue, but the timeframe element is the wetlands.
Yeah.
Getting those permanent.
It's on the township. Welcome.
Is, is, is that a DEP thing?
That's a DEP.
Huge.
Do they have approximate guestimate completion date?
You're talking as far as the, the facility or you're talking DEP?
For, for the facility itself.
I, I believe they want to be in it as soon as possible. I think it's due next year.
Yeah, I believe, sir, if everything were to just magically go as planned, I believe it was supposed to be like a two, two and a half years till we're actually going to be able to get in there, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion then, table it until, the land development plan until next meeting, when we'll have the photometric plan and sign those set plans in progress.
My second motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Looks like it's going to be a nice facility though.
Mm-hmm.
But you're anxious to move in.
We are, sir. Like I said, if you saw the one we're in right now, it's, it's probably one of the oldest buildings, you know, Pennsylvania State Police still operates in this area. Like I said before, this, this as a Sallyport and I mean, like every police department is a Sallyport. I mean, I don't know if you guys know what's, you know, it's a Sallyport. I mean, you pull in, it's a giant garage, you pull in, you shut the doors.
Yeah.
Once the doors are shut, the doors are shut. I mean, there's emergency butts, there's cameras in there, no one else can open every other thing. And then the first way you go is into the patrol, you know, and something like that. I mean, we now pull into a parking lot, you know, in the middle of two high schools, you know? Get out of the car, tell them, hey, look over there for a sec, they look over there, we type in our little security code, open the door, go up the steps. I mean, it's, you know, so. We kind of laugh because I think it's been thirty-two or, I forget what it is, years since people have been saying we're going to be getting in the building, so it's, if you saw our Christmas card, it was quite humorous because each year's lined up, within twenty sixteen when we started moving it, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, it was all that. We're hopeful, we're very hopeful.
By making that motion, I hope I didn't tempt fate.
Yeah, we'll just see what kind of card you're grabbing, you know, sir.
I'll be walking home tonight. Wow. Next on our agenda is, so the alternate green space, do we need to be looking at that then or?
No, we're just tabled.
Okay, yeah. So I guess we're going to relax on that. I guess there's not a whole lot to be done there anyways.
Were there, were there suggestions? Are we looking for suggestions or comments on all the green space or?
I think we should talk about it. I think we should talk about it.
Should talk about it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I understand the security or a little bit of the security side, but we're also trying to soften the looks instead of stocky to, and, and how is it going to be addressed? How is the building going to be addressed on the outside as far as the building itself and then the ground?
Okay. Well, I guess out front, and your ordinance requires a five-foot buffer of green space around the entire building other than where you have entrance drives. And we meet that, we exceed that in a lot of different places. We at least got the five foot. The security issue is when you have anything higher than some shrubs or anything around the building that people can hide behind.
Sure.
Sneak up on people. We just don't want that in the police facility. So we've tried to add some islands in the back as much as we could to work with their canopies, to work with their layout, but they're filled with river rock. So we're trying to make it look half decent, but at the same time, we don't want some sort of hazard for the police.
Sure.
In the back of the site, there is a wooded area and we're trying to keep a little bit of the woods around the impound yard, which will also have a fence, so we're trying to shield that, screen that, because that's not going to be the most pleasant to be on.
Because on the, on the fire, that's on the firehouse side, correct?
Both sides. There's existing woods here that we're only taking out what we need to, to put in the impound yard and then there is a line on the firehouse side too that we're just re...
That's probably most visible on, on that side.
Yeah, and plus we put the impound yard clear in the back. On the other side, there is still around the cul-de-sac, you'll have some tree line left because we can't disturb all the wetlands, so we're trying to keep some of that water coming down through, trying to keep that vegetation. So there is a little bit of trees there and along the residential line. We thought it was important, pre-ordinance to at least, since it is residential, this is industrial, to have at least a little bit of screen. We're going to put some low shrubs, evergreen shrubs, along the property line to make like a border between the two. We felt that was a little bit of a mix. It's, it's further away from the facility, it's down towards the firearm side, it's a low shrub and it shows the separation between the two, so we're trying to give you a little bit there what we can.
Is that impound yard going to have, you said it's fenced, is it going to be all blocked off so that we can see junkers sitting out? I don't know what, what goes in there. Is it something that a vehicle's going to sit there for six months or is it?
A lot of times they do. It's usually about a year that a vehicle could get stuck in there, but if you have a case like a pizza bomber case, I mean, one of those vehicles just taken out like two years ago.
Gotcha.
So I mean, it kind of dates it. Our current impound lot has, it's a chain link, but it has that, yeah, I don't know what you would call the slats or whatever, you know?
Slats or, yeah.
Yeah, so it does have those. I mean, it's not like you're just going to have them, like he, he had, did say, it was, it's going to be in the very back, but it's not like we're just going to have, you know, junkers all sitting back there.
Sure, but from the firehouse side, you're going to see, because you're going to go right next to that or I'm presuming...
I see what you're saying with that. Yeah, but like I said, we did the slats, which we have now, so.
Yeah, we can do that here with two, the slats.
Yeah.
They're not going to be red, white and blue or anything? I mean, they're going to be some, something somewhat...
Can't it be more earthy?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
So one of the things that all of us are unanimous on is that we don't want to have Um, so, one of the things that all of us are unanimous on is that we don't wanna have any obstacles for anyone to hide behind. And, you know, to that extent, whatever this ends up looking like, and, but as Tim pointed out, as amenable to, amenable to the surrounding properties that we can make it, you know, and we have to walk that lining between them. Honestly, I know, and I'm sure speaking for others, that we don't want any obstacle there that somebody take cover behind. That's a, is a big concern. So, if you feel that same way, I'm, I'm sure you do, so. Because based on what's happened in New York and other places in Pennsylvania, those are tragedies, we don't want that.
Is that kinda, the green space understanding, or are we? So you're, you're just.
I'm kinda leaning up to you guys.
Okay. So you're not showing any, I didn't, I don't have it right in front of me, uh, plantings down that, I guess it would be the south side?
Yes, there are there. The green robe goes up here to where the existing wood line is, so we have a small hedge line, just to show separation and that's.
I don't know other questions.
This is the one that I actually understand. At first, I looked at it and I go, wait a minute, where, where's everything at? I remember what we were doing here, I go, oh, well, that makes sense, makes complete sense. Go ahead.
I didn't bring it up earlier, Matt, the sidewalk ordinance.
And in fact, there, this is an industrial zone, so the sidewalk ordinance does not take effect here.
The firewall have any?
No.
Okay.
Our current ordinance does not require an industrial zone, that's one of the reasons we're kinda looking at it.
Sure.
Then I need to call for a motion on the alternate green space as presented.
I make a motion, we accept the, uh, our green space, based plan as presented.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Any more questions before?
See you next month, I guess.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is a new realty, a land development plan, by again.
If you wanna jump ahead to number eleven, that's still regarding them, get these guys back on the road, I haven't followed that.
Their, their planning module.
That's just a lot of it tapped to the sewer.
Tammy was kinda. It's your typical component four A, did you want me to go through all the questions? It's your standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up here.
Then I need to call for a motion on.
I'll make a motion of approval, as presented.
Signed, yes. Yep. I need a second?
Second. Discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. New realty. Uh, this is a land development plan that shows, uh, an addition going on the back of the Subaru dealership. And, uh, we're handling the stormwater management by simply enlarging slightly the existing stormwater management pond that's right there at the Subaru dealership. Actually, pretty simple.
Thank you.
Take care, thank you.
My car's not out there, by the way. We saw your.
Yeah. Talked to the green space, you guys are all good.
If you can jump ahead to sheet three or four. There it is. So sheet two is the existing conditions today, and sheet three is what they're proposing for an addition. Currently, right now, if you have a Subaru, and you want it to get in for service, it's a four-week wait. And Subaru's having none of it, they are demanding an expanded shop. They're putting in like twelve more service bays.
So one thing to point out on this plan is actually pretty interesting. They, they went back and, and relooked at the plan, and what you see here is the actual parking layout minus where they're selling cars, this is only showing employee parking and/or service and, uh, customer parking. So it kinda gives you a layout, like if you actually went there, where you would park. So, and, and this does meet the current ordinance. And I believe the dumpster is going in the back here. And as Jim said, this pond's getting larger, the building's coming off the back, and then they're gonna, looks like they're gonna repave this area.
We have to lower that area down about a foot and a half, because right now it's higher than the existing floor. So we're just gonna lower it and repave it, round and back.
And that's twelve bays, did you say?
The addition is, yes.
And then we give them a total of what, twenty-four, or?
I don't think they have twelve now, no. See, the other part of it is, they also service the BMWs up here, too, yeah.
Well, they, they started that lifetime warranty on them, so they're gonna have a lot of service. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Now, is this, is this in the area where we had problems before with that, that grading?
Yes.
Yeah. And there was a little, a little rise put in back there?
Yep.
And that's, and that's in the same area?
Yeah, and that's all accounted for in the revised stormwater management. I know that, uh, they have an issue with photometrics as well. I, you know, Alan is committed to making it right, trying to get a study done.
Okay.
And he indicated to me that, you know, whatever it takes, shields or baffles.
I think it's gonna need quite a bit of shielding, which, because just my observations, the lights in the front, they're angled in a way that they light up this whole, sorry to.
Right in Gary's, right in Gary's house, even.
Really?
It's a hundred back to Gary News.
Oh, I thought it was a Peach Street spillover.
It's, it's all side alumin.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, they are, you could get a sun panel.
When, when you drive down Moore Road, it's almost like you're going to a football game. And it looks like you're driving to a stadium.
Yeah, he's committed to making it right, wherever it takes.
Okay.
To comply. And he, and also the loudspeakers, as well.
Those were two of our hot points that we talked about.
And from my recollection, he says he doesn't use loudspeakers now? Is that right? I think historically, he said he hasn't.
I don't think he does.
I don't think he does.
I don't hear much of that.
I, I've been there a bunch, and I've never heard.
Yeah, I don't think he does, like Nissan does.
So I don't necessarily think that's a problem with this one, I just put it in there just to, to cover all the bases.
Got it.
Um, but I think our big violators with that one is Honda and Nissan.
Yes, I do hear him at Nissan, I've been up there, too, yeah.
But we're still, well, Honda, they haven't done any, they haven't done anything, so they really, they're still kinda grandfathered in, same with Nissan, but I, Honda's, we've talked to them several times, and, and they can't, they say they can't live without them. So that'll be an interesting topic, but I'm, I digress, sorry.
As long as, I think, is they address that photometric, that's a huge, but.
I've been, yeah, he's agreed to do whatever it takes, and we're waiting on the.
Because he just put in a bunch of lights?
Yes.
That could have been very expensive.
Yeah, I think they can be modified.
That would be great.
Yeah, with a shade.
Shield, a shield, I think they call it, I don't know.
Any other items to discuss? Need to call for a motion then, on the land development plan, or new realty, I guess.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the plan with the contingent of the loudspeaker issue and the lighting. And that'll be worked out, I guess that'll be something that'll be worked out, with you, Matt, is that? Okay.
And it will be addressed prior to supervisors.
Right, okay. So that's.
Thought it would be addressed.
There it is.
Can't cut the electrician.
We've been having growing pains with these lighting plans, but I think, like everything else, it's hard for the first couple of times, and eventually it's just normal again.
It'll make some more attractive.
I agree.
So did I have a motion? You got a motion for me, it was kind of a little contingent upon the photometric.
And I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Now on the alternate green space plan, for the same parcel?
So it doesn't really show up too well on the overhead, I gave you the, the plan we had in our office, so you can kinda look at it up there. For some reason, it didn't photocopy very well.
Is it colored, is that why?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so.
Let me take a look at it. What do we do?
You wanna hold it up, and you can point?
Well, I'm, you know, I.
First time you saw it.
Yeah.
All right, let me take a stab out of that.
Thanks, Matt.
Sorry. He had that look on his face, didn't he?
So Christopher and Chris and, well, he might wanna gather around. So, they're looking at it kinda holistically, just like they did with the apartment, that was a request from me, because we've been piecemealing everything here, let's look at it as a whole site, so.
This is the north property line.
Yes.
It continues south, and then picks up here.
Sheet here, so, let's start here, so we have the existing tree line here. There is one, two, three, four, five trees proposed to fill in a gap along Peach Street, and then we have the existing vegetation that goes down the rest of the way along Peach Street.
Right.
We have existing trees that were put in along the perimeter. And then we're looking to add three trees near this wetland area, it looks like they're kinda replace some that were taken out. And then, looks like these guys here were taken out, but we have the existing vegetation along the back. And then we have interior green space that's existing throughout the site, which happens to meet the, the green space ordinance requirements. So for the most part, it's an alternate green space, because they're utilizing vegetation in the back.
And on the side.
And on the side, and then over here, instead of going all the way to the property line, um, if you remember last time, they just kinda brightened in.
The developed area.
The developed area.
Nice job.
Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
Couldn't have done it better myself. I knew it was a good plan.
You got good people, Joe.
Yeah, you do.
She said it was a good plan.
It's the employees that really do make the firm.
Take the rest of the day off, Joe.
So that's my plan, man.
Any other questions on this?
No problem.
Then I need to call for a motion on that, uh. I'll make a motion to accept the alternate green space plan as presented. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a review of the Walzak Allen subdivision, authorized, authorized, signed?
Okay, so, okay, okay, I guess, so I have another component four A, on the board there, um, standard questions. And do you have comprehensive plan, et cetera, same thing, for Walzak.
And for Christopher, who wasn't here last time, this was, uh, it was an eight-block subdivision on Robinson Road, um, just, my direction.
In our, yeah.
Just to the west of Dundee and Hawke.
Mm-hmm, okay. Everybody okay with all of that?
Yeah.
Need I ask, uh, that I need to call for a motion to be able to sign that proposed?
I'll make a motion, uh, for the chairman of the planning commission to sign the plan.
Need a second?
It's up to one of the Chrissies. It's up to the two Chrissies now.
I could, I know how this is. I'm having challenges, A, if I wasn't here, you know, and I apologize for that, I really tried to be, but I wasn't here, so I, I have a problem kinda second the motion, to be honest with you.
Do you have reservations about it, or about this planning module, or?
Um, I wish I was at the other meeting to really get a good grasp of what's going on, I mean, I, I heard about it, kinda third party, I was interested in it, and I found out it was something completely different, um, that I didn't really understand, so, um. My understanding is building houses to, to rent out is the area we can be. Which we can do, for instance.
For permitted use, yes.
I know, it hurts.
We're getting into semantics, you know, the definitions, motel, short-term, what's the difference?
Spelling.
That's it, but who put it in?
And we, and we could start the process for a curative amendment for the zoning ordinance, if it's something that you wanna pursue, but at the end of the day, this is a subdivision of property, it's not, it could be single-family homes, it can be long-term rentals, you could build houses and rent it out to people on a year, a year basis. So, from the sewer module point of view, we have to look at it as a subdivision of land.
Yeah.
That, that's kinda where I was at, and like, that was kinda my issue, saying, all right, I really wasn't here to see what happened, and I mean, I know what the intent was, possibly, I just wanna say, but. Sure.
I'll second it, I was here.
So, more discussion?
That's, that's the signed sheet?
Yeah.
And it says it's a proposal consistent with the ordinance? And I think, I think there's some, like I said, some amendments in the ordinance, so, that's, that's my statement.
So then I'll call for a motion, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Uh, motion carried. Uh, next on our agenda is the sidewalk ordinance update.
All right, I'll try not to take up too much time. Yeah, let's start with the map. Can you zoom in on that a little bit, or? So. This way I'll blind you guys, almost blinded you. So, as of last time, the areas in green are existing sidewalk where we have on both sides of the street. Uh, the areas in yellow are areas where there's sidewalk at least on one side of the road. And areas in red are deferred, they're not gonna show it up too good, but they're there. And we got a couple up here. And then, the areas in blue are areas that us in the, well, I mean, but I bounced it with these guys. Uh, areas where we think we need sidewalk in the future. So it's kinda like the, the master plan, and if you see, it kinda goes off script here in a few areas to follow along with the proposed transportation plan that we have already on file. So, just the highlights, we have on the ninety-ninety corridor, a section of proposed sidewalk, we have the gaps getting filled in on Peach Street, we have a section of sidewalk for all over the road, uh, Robinson, passenger, I know it's too little, too late, but.
No, the state police property.
Yes, we cannot force them to do it right now.
Uh, I mean, I'm just looking at it, I was looking at that property for the firehouse, too, for them to put in, for them to put in a sidewalk on their side. Who, you're talking major excavation. Who, you're talking major excavation and.
Yeah.
And even with the, with the state lease property. And, and I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not saying they should do it. But looking at continuity with, with Oliver Road. You have to put a crosswalk in to go across all of the road so they can walk on the north side and the other side.
Ideally, no, we wouldn't do that, especially on the road.
Having the traffic.
Yes. Now, if the day comes that there was a traffic light here or something, that would be more peaceful. That's why I was getting the line. But then again, you also gotta look at that this is gonna be kinda a master plan type of thing. When we read the ordinance, it sounds scarier. Cause it has a potential to be scarier, but it's not the intent and hopefully we can work on that. But we have the Oliver Road. We have Robinson, Hesenger, down to Dorn. Dorn Road, hopefully someday connect the parks. And then the ninety-seven corridor to make that a little more walkable, especially from the mobile home parks up to Amenities closer to I-9. And some of this is pie in the sky things and that's why we threw it out, but let's.
I would like to remove the things that are pie in the sky.
Let's whittle it down, yeah.
You know what I mean? Uh, ju- why? You know, it's just gonna cause controversy. You know, whether I, I like it or not, I, I just think, you know, what should be gone shouldn't be there.
So money. You have money for anything along nineteen? Is, uh, is that state helping us out for that?
This is not gonna, this is sidewalk ordinance. This is not kinda gonna cost the township money per se.
I would say this, what would be prioritized? I mean, how would we rank any of these as far as priority for the township themselves?
I think for the most part, the priority ones, the township, the township can do safety-related sidewalk projects. That's what we're doing on Hanover. That's what we did on Oliver. Cause there was people on the road. We needed to get them off the road. Now, the next safety area from the township has to be Peach Street. Cause there are people that are scurrying across the roads. They're, they're walking down the medians. And, and we need to fill in those gaps. We have people walking along. Our traffic conduits on the side of the road, on the opposite side of Guy, we're able to get from here down to Hershey. Or from Hershey, well, this gap here where you go across the. So, and, and we're gonna work a pen down for those cause just, it's a multi-million dollar project to do all that. The township doesn't have the funds to do that. So we, we've looked in the, there's the possibility for grants. Uh, Pendot has future plans to pay here. So we're gonna try to talk to them when they do that to try to push that for like the MPO and stuff like that.
Repay Peach? Okay. And what about a, a bridge or like a splash or a given, you know, that, you're talking about that travel.
That's, that was put on the long-range transportation plan. And there's a, and also a long-range transportation plan over here. Um, that was put on there as a dual left turn lane reconfiguration project. So that's on the long-range transportation plan, which puts it out like twenty years. Now, something could happen that could bring that closer to fruition, but as Christopher can tell you, the MPO is not a fast process.
It's not. However, if it's in that book, you can go for funding. So you can go to D C E D. You can get, uh, representatives involved if you wanna push something like that. As long as it's in the book, they think it's vote-worthy, you know? So, but yes, it, it is a snail's pace at best.
And if you're not in the book, you don't have a prayer or a.
Yeah, that's the thing. You, you wanna be in the book.
So we are in the book. And we got quite a few projects in the book.
What's the, uh, over there towards the far right that looks like there's a, yeah, what is that?
That's community park.
Okay. Cause that, to me, a, a priority should be connecting the parks.
I think so too.
You know?
And, and they're so close together and it's. But there's topographic issues there with that too.
Oh, yeah.
Especially with Pendot and their ditches.
Is Town Hall there?
What's that?
Town Hall.
Town Hall Road State.
Okay, so.
And that got put in the book to put a sidewalk along Town Hall Road. So that's on the long-range transportation. You can thank Deborah. She advocated.
So where do we not want sidewalk?
Let them write down.
Well, one man's opinion, and I'm here for thirty-plus years. Subdivisions are a great, great place to walk. I think that's the place to walk. If you're gonna be out on Oliver Road or Dorn or Town Hall Road, to me, that's just a suicide mission. Because, and I understand, but there's plenty of places to walk, other than walking on the road or walking in those areas. To me, stay in your subdivision. Walk fifteen loops around the subdivision. I guess, don't go elsewhere. And, I mean, that's, that's one man's opinion. I don't think, I moved out here to maybe get away from people. Well, I mean, seriously, yeah, I, I bought ten acres to, and I, not that I'm, I'm a, uh, antisocial, but. I want property to have some space and to have somebody, dogs yapping down the road or whatever. Uh, that's not why I moved out here four, thirty years ago. Um, I, I understand, yeah, I understand subdivisions. Hey, knock yourself out. Walk fifteen loops.
Yeah.
Stay there. I'm done. Oh, that's fun. And, and now Peach Street, Peach Street is, yeah, I'm not, but Peach Street is, and I understand, not that, I mean, that's definitely with retail involved there.
And my thought, and this is, this is just showing everything. These are like areas that could blow up residentially. That's why they're kinda shown there. Now Peach Street, you have people walking to amenities. I think you need to have that. The ninety-seven corridor. Some of these people, like the, in, in the mobile home parks, they're walking to Dollar General to pick up groceries. I can, that's walking to get amenities. That's providing access. And that's kinda the, the drive in this area, cause you can see we're not going through every subdivision here. If you're walking around in Hawick, Dundee, you don't need sidewalks. There's hardly anybody driving down those roads. I see people, I see more people walking through there than cars, so. And that's the thing, and like some of these kinda offline subdivisions, you can walk down the street and feel safe.
People walk down the road anyways. Do I know if there's a sidewalk or not? I just walk down the road.
Yeah.
Guys walking right down the middle of Hammer Road is like, wait, we've got sidewalks.
Yeah.
And, and you're making me, I mean, not that I queue on it, but you're making me go out of my way to, because there's sidewalks. I think just because there's a sidewalk doesn't mean somebody's gonna walk there. I guess it might.
Yeah, I, I have seen, and of course, I don't know if you've seen it too, but I've had seen the, the issue there. Uh, north, Peach right there, white by white ones.
Yeah.
You know, that, that lane pull over, if you're going north, pull over in that lane and then you've got pedestrian traffic, you know, in that lane. And there's no, there's no sidewalk there. You know, it's not like they, they're not.
Can't happen though. You look at what's there. You got embankments on both sides.
Well, yeah, the geography goes, the sidewalk wouldn't.
Well, I understand that, but today it's an embankment, but tomorrow it could be terrorists, you know? I mean, it's a big project. I know, I know, I know, but you know, it's. That's what it is. It is what it is. You got people walking in there. They're walking in traffic and it's hurried traffic. It's not residential traffic. It's people going to get food and stuff, running errands and stuff like that.
That's why they should sell, shouldn't walk.
Well, that's, they go there to buy stuff.
I understand.
You know, it's.
That's it. You get the piece from Renata who are coming out, coming out.
Yep.
And it's, the draws there, I mean, and it's not formal, it's, it's, it's.
Well, in the way our zoning was written, there is the possibility that we could have residential intermixing. And in order to do that, you need to have the infrastructure there for people to be able to walk around. So this is, from the, from my point of view and then I think the supervisors, this is. If we had to do another sidewalk project, this is where it would happen. Now, we're trying to do it grant-funded wise without too much expenditure and then kinda pushing with the sidewalk ordinance as well.
What did the sidewalk cost over at Hamlet? You just had to hit up?
Eighty-eight thousand.
How many, how many, how long?
It's twelve hundred a year for you.
Eight?
Sorry about that.
Eighty-eight?
Eighty-eight thousand.
So really, it's gonna take a long time to get past your initial priority, right? So.
No, I mean.
I, I know we knew that.
It's a free picture, dude.
But I, I guess, um, to the thing, uh, Edinburgh Road, I mean Edinburgh Road, what is that?
That's Edinburgh Road.
This is Hershey.
Thank you, Hershey. Alright, so.
I think that's a pie in the sky.
Yeah. I mean, to me, I, unless you're actually gonna do something about the Oliver intersection. You know, you really don't have any real mobility there. We've already deferred the sidewalks by Copperleaf.
The Hamlet.
Yeah. Oh, Hamlet.
Yeah, Oliver, Hamlet. I understand.
Yeah.
Long weekend. So I mean, I know the Edinburgh Road study kinda dictated looking at some of those things in a way, but. Are we really going down that route anyway? And are we really gonna see growth over there?
Along Hershey, I don't really think so.
Yeah. To me, it's, it's an unsafe.
Cause we're in the zoning, it's a lot of service. I think it's kinda locked in what it was.
In the draw for people to get there, you really have parking over in the Copperleaf to walk into load or, I mean, I guess. I think if you took it off twenty years from now, you could look at it and say, well, you know what? Maybe there's a chance.
Yeah.
You know, um. Now, is Mill Creek doing anything along Edinburgh Road as far as sidewalks, except for the little patch that they have?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, to me, that's kinda multi-municipal. If, if, if they're doing it, we do it. And I know Mill Creek just does sidewalking first just about everywhere.
Yeah, and, uh, as opposed to the issue on Peach where Mill Creek has sidelined.
Yeah.
Almost all, all the way to some spot. So they did require that.
Sidewalk entrance like right here. Just bring me up.
And what is that? Car plugs or cat plugs? They're not leaving anytime soon.
No, and then this is Niagara Plastics.
I mean, how.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
So many names for that place.
I know, I was just gonna say, I know what you meant.
I thought you were talking about the sandblasting place across the street. They're not going anywhere either.
Yeah. So I mean, yeah, would it need safe access for people to walk? Yeah, but, um, that's a major bus problem. I don't think there's too many people walking.
And the other thing with the Edinburgh Road study, there was a grand plan that actually made the long-range transportation plan was to put. A walking trail along I-79 from the subdivision here over to.
That makes sense.
Where that would feel the street used to be. So, yeah. You were here for that one, right?
Yeah. You just saw the piece? You want a trail to go from where?
The subdivision.
Copperleaf all the way to the backside of a retail establishment? For the intent of.
Getting people in this area over to there. I didn't put it in there. It was part of the study. I was just trying to get a road.
Free pictures are pretty good. Past, I mean, reality is reality.
But the thing is, is this is gonna happen. And it needs to happen, cause there are people that, that walk that every single day.
I, I've been adamant about that. I've been the firm since day one. I, that'd be good.
And we have a project we're gonna put in the storm sewer. So then Largemoor has no more excuses why he can't put it in.
Okay, so are we all in agreement in that corridor of what is and what isn't?
So we would nix ninety-nine, get rid of Hershey. Will we keep it in this area here around the commercial stuff?
I think your foot traffic picks up there, doesn't it?
So we, we would leave this little block, this gap here, kinda that way we fill in that area.
Question is, is there a bus stop right there? Or a bus stop? I mean, that's kinda how you might wanna start thinking about coordinating some of these instead of.
There's a bus stop there. There's one.
But is there one by the Gitgo?
I can't, no.
No?
Yeah, it's in Target.
It's in Target?
Yes, it might be.
You're looking at the elevation, you're jumping up too.
Not to Target. They drive through there.
Okay.
But I don't think there's.
Like that ravine. That ravine is, that's, that, both sides. That's, the sewer, sewer department, that's their property here. And then this is, that's a huge ravine. The realism is, I mean, it makes sense to me, but our realism is, to me, not there.
I know, it's, it sounds like a big thing, but.
At least they had some dirt that they could put that ass on.
Yeah.
Seriously, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you'll never get handicap accessible past those two ravines.
You're gonna have to widen the bridge. Remember we talked about that?
Well, there's no real bridge there though.
It's just a collar.
Yeah. That's what they had to do. They had to do something similar to that on, uh, over Wollman Creek there on, on Peach and near Coons. They had to do something similar.
That's a natural bridge.
Well, they, but I guess what I'm saying is that they took the structure that's there and they widened it.
Sure.
So I'm saying, you take the structure that's there and you do what you can. And that's all I'm saying. But it's like, I agree, I agree. It's big money. It's huge, huge money. But I don't think we should just cast it aside because it's big money. I mean, look, we got this high gas tax. We get, you know. On Peach, it's a, it's a state highway, you know, it's.
I think it's a harm in leaving it in there, but the reality is, the competing funding is gonna be near impossible even to try to get this stuff around the other areas. I mean, that money's really next to almost impossible to get now. It, it's probably, I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't think I am. When I, when I, when I say that, things are tough before, but now there are even more cash drafts for, for things like this. There's special projects to go, but an area like this, they're assuming that landowners are gonna do it and you gotta compete with the whole state for that money. You know, and you gotta have the match. So there, there's a lot of coordination that would have to be involved to do that. But I don't see it probably having on there.
Yeah.
You know, there's some that just should be deleted and that one's kinda like, hey, you know what? We should leave it out because, but honestly, it'll look very inequable if you take it out. You know, um, but the reality is, yeah, it's gonna be tough.
Well, and if everybody wants, just, we, we did get this piece put in, this little fifty-foot chump. So the ordinance does work. People will catch you behind it.
Okay.
So let's go, did you guys get those? Okay, so go on south. We're gonna try to do this right here. Um, Oliver Road, yea or nay?
If there's a negotiation, I'd say at least the Robinson Road.
Yeah.
That's where. Cause isn't that where industrial starts to?
So from here over?
Yeah, I would say yes to that. The rest, I mean, you can probably talk about, I mean.
Cause the other thing is, is residential properties, that would develop a residential property that would get into here. And then we have a, the gap. Cause this is the state police property, fire department.
And once they build, it's never going in, right? I mean, they've got ponds and everything else in there, I mean.
Well, that's why we're gonna talk about the ordinance and how it's written.
Okay.
So do we go to here or do you wanna try to keep the whole thing? I'm not trying to talk you into moving there yet. I'm just telling you what I think might happen.
I'd say the Robinson.
That's where you, that's where you're at, right?
Yeah, and, and if, if there's a compromise to be made, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we'll stop at here. Now, these people being residential, we can kinda, they'll have an internal.
And that can always end up, you know, going from sidewalk here into the other residential area connecting them.
And the other thing that could happen someday is maybe Lord would wanna do like a fitness trail and you have something in here and then connects it and then goes around or something like that.
Oh, that'd be nice.
A lot of their folks, you know, jog in, right on.
Yeah.
Right on Robinson Road. I see him. I come back, cause I come back across there every day about twelve-thirty to one o'clock. And I see probably decent weather. I see six to eight runners or walkers out there.
Bicycles too.
So now Robinson Road. We have, they go on the whole length, cause there are people. Now, the thing is with Robinson Road. You have eight to ten foot berms.
Well, what's proposed there? You know, in that area, I think you'd wanna leave some sidewalks. Wow, that's good timing. Awful.
I don't think it's that.
It's fancy stuff.
There we go.
Who programmed? Did you program that? Or is that just a happy little accident? Anyways. These lights actually went off. So we have the Family First Sports Park here. We kinda threw in like some kinda trail going through their property as like a grand dream thing. Uh, cause they plan on putting facilities on this open field and then they have the facilities here like have to go through the property. We have Calmar here, they're deferred. Uh, and then Lord, but the thing.
They go anywhere?
No.
Is that, is that all funding or lack of supply and lack of help or?
Multitude, I think.
Multitude, I think.
I think it's defunctness more than anything. They're having issues.
Nobody wants to pick that up either, huh?
No, they're still trying to do it.
Really?
Yeah, they just don't have the resources or the.
Well, that was a big time company that went, did all kinds of development around, didn't they?
Well, they took the lumber from that site and they shipped it down to a site they're doing in South Carolina.
Is there still?
There is some, there is.
No, I think there's still. There might be some.
Maybe we can still go on by there.
Nine is on a couple homes.
It was kind of a. Not like a senior citizen.
That was aimed at senior citizens, but.
Over fifty-five in the area.
Yeah.
So it's, it's still, it's still going, they're just not moving. But the thing is, is it, it's a super wide road. So there are areas for people to walk along the berm. Um, there's never, I haven't heard of any. Residential people are using it. There hasn't been any incidents that I've.
More limited traffic on there, more destination going to Lord or whatever. You're gonna catch Oliver Road that takes that corner off.
So do we keep it here? And the same thing with Hester? Is it really not necessary?
The other reason why I'm thinking about Robinson Road, cause again, what they've done in doing at that park, I know I'm there all the time and I park on Robinson Road. There's at least forty, fifty cars or any given time.
Right in the first.
And then you lose your berm.
Yeah, and, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be exacerbated if they develop more. Cause of the plans that they have, I mean, there's gonna be people trying to park everywhere, cause they don't wanna go.
As of years ago.
Well, and the thing is, is.
Home line. It was crazy soccer from years ago.
And the thing is, is it shouldn't be that way. They should have ample parking on the site. And maybe when they come for land development, that's what we push. Hey, yeah, we need to stop parking along the sides of the road.
Where else do they park? Of course, I guess they shuttle, they shuttle them to Edinburgh, or I mean, there was a bunch of stuff happening. I mean, I don't really know if you would need it on Hester really, I don't know what would be.
It's more for the Lord people that are walking around during their lunch break and.
But there's no traffic, it's destination nowhere.
Yeah.
Cause there's nothing back there except for the, the factory, there's one factory that's.
Uh, stat type.
There you go.
Um, program. Yeah, so I had this going down to here just because it was future road, we have, um, auto road. So if we don't think these are necessary, they can come off. And the thing is, if we take them off, we can always put them on at a later date.
That's what I was thinking. That way you clean it up, so it looks like there's some kind of objectives there. And again, they'd be back on if you need them.
So for the time being, we just kind of take off this area?
No, Hester and no to.
Maybe we keep the sidewalk on, on the Robinson, just as people develop, that way, like if this ever goes, the people who live in here can walk over.
Yeah, cause I mean, if you're gonna have it on.
What is that, Oliver?
Um, you should have it on Robinson, cause again, you're, you're catering to those needs that are going in that.
So have this maybe and then take the rest off? Okay. Alright, Doran Road.
Tim says no.
We know Tim's woke, so.
Tim says no. Wow, Tim, what if it, what if it were just a widened berm? I'm just, I'm just gauging the question because I have the same exact thought for Town Hall.
Traffic going forty, fifty, sixty miles an hour down to here, uh, to me, it does make sense to have pedestrian traffic.
But they're using it.
They are, but you can't fix stupid though either.
We're gonna say ten.
Well, I mean, I think the common sense, I, I didn't even, I, but I, I, I think, you know, common sense, if there is such a thing, I think you have to use your noggin to aim.
Well, and, and the thing is.
I can't see a baby stroller going down through there and they do.
Is there, is there a probability of being another large development out there right next to where, um, you know, kind of where Mr. Willis?
This is a, a large undeveloped residential. Now, there's a lot of wetlands in there, so I don't think it could develop much.
Yeah, you might get someone on the road itself.
On the road itself, but may not be back.
I might kind of agree with Tim though, because it's hard. When you're driving on Doran Road, it's kind of silly and you can't really see people. That's, I, I don't know.
That's where the kind of, Chris was saying, if you had a wide berm, it would give someone kind of room to jump off to the side if the cars coming or.
You see there's a lot in like rural states, like I see a lot in Wisconsin, where they just widen berm, because again, there's not much out there.
Pitta's been doing that quite a bit too, like honestly, riding my bike, Peach Street feels safer than any other road. Cause I have an eight foot berm to ride on.
Sure.
I don't have to get out on the track. So we, we can nix it and then maybe as part of the street specs, we have a widened berm road section. So Peach Street, lower, this section of Peach Street.
I don't see much pedestrian traffic on there, but I guess that's.
Scary as hell, that's.
Hate to say that.
Oh, you agree.
I see two guys that work out that way, that's about it, but it's always the same people.
Here, and you have the widened berm already.
Yeah.
Now that'll nix like, well, we still have the deferments in place, so. Those are, those, the deferments are forever.
Yeah, I think that's.
They're like dice.
Wow.
Now, the others, then I, I don't think we need anything for us to wait down Peach. Why it should be.
Worst people walking to, I guess, is the question.
That's the thing, I think Peach Street should be more of a, if you're, it's amenities, so, but there's not a lot of residents here anymore. Just a handful. Now, Town Hall Village.
There is special briefs.
They are.
I, I'm glad we're out on live, on livestream, cause I'll probably be crucified, but it's an offline development. For the most part, there aren't people going back to the people that live there. I don't think it's a dangerous place to walk on the road and those roads are wide.
Agreed.
Agree. And I, and I mentioned to the supervisors, you have a twenty-eight foot wide roadway, you could narrow it down to ten foot lanes and strip off a pedestrian long path on the side.
Well, and there is, there is.
There are some sidewalks.
Sidewalks, yeah.
It would, it was hodge, hodge into the new sections that have sidewalks.
The only thing that I would say to think in the back of your mind, for those people living there and township, what kind of value to your tax bases to do with those sidewalks in, in a residential area? If you spend the money now, do you get it later in space? I guess is all I'm saying. I, I agree, I mean, I have a sidewalk in front of my house, I think I would put it on, so.
I don't know if we're looking at it as much as an investment, as it is, it should have been there years ago.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to be a, a social justice thing, I mean, it's kind of like, is the money worth it?
Yeah.
Yeah. In a perfect world, we'd, we'd walk the sidewalk.
No.
Or not.
So I'm just those streetlights.
Yeah, or not, or not.
Sorry.
But yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're showing lines right now. In a perfect world, you know, with all those houses in that density, yeah, it might, it might have been nice to have sidewalks in there. But if it's a wide road, then again, I mean, my experience might have, you know, we don't have any problems.
I'll say this, a golf cart doesn't fit on the sidewalk, so it's not even applicable sometimes.
You're saying, Chris.
So Town Hall Road, we have it on the long range transportation plan. Believe it or not, I see people walking by this building on a pretty regular basis. And I've walked the road, it's pretty carry, it's real narrow, you have no berm. So, and I would, someday if we had connectivity, I think we'd have it on here. Kind of the same thing with this section, Old French, to try to make a connection to, I think, the piano. Alright.
Yeah, I'd be, I don't think it's pressing a safety issue, some of the other places that we've mentioned, but still.
But it's still a safety issue.
Sure, it still is a safety issue, so there's no berm, so.
And if we have it on there, we might be able to talk hand on and put it in.
Topographically, there's no real challenges there.
There's challenges.
Oh, yeah.
There's.
Right out of Peach Street.
Well, yeah, and after the first.
I don't know which side of the road would be best, cause.
Yeah.
One looks pretty good for a while and then it goes downhill and then the next looks pretty good and then, yeah, so it'd be a.
What's the time of people walk down the ridge and that's how the road got there? I mean, that's a hundred and fifty years ago, or two hundred or whatever it was.
Alright, so moving on, uh, where do we have left? I think just ninety-seven, right?
Yeah.
So the ninety-seven corridor, I, I think social justice and everything like that, I think we have it on there. Now, Johnson Road, we have a deferment for Huso Landscaping. Do we need to go down Johnson Road with a sidewalk? I don't know. Cause there's, you have kind of, you, kind of the same thing here, there's more traffic, so it's a little scarier to walk on the road through here, but people do it. Um, we have sidewalk around the sheets, around the daylon, I would think. Do the Glen Marner, so you have a route for people to get to in the development and go to the amenities, but not necessarily on the side streets. Cause there's really nowhere to put a sidewalk.
Yeah.
You have super narrow roads and the houses are plenty good off the road.
And what about topographical, uh, on?
Johnson Road, Peach Street.
Yeah, I mean, that's what some township is, it's a summit.
So, I don't know, my way, I think this one might be subcurb, uh, big word, not necessary.
Suburban?
Yeah, I don't know a lot of Chinese big words.
Yeah, it's a super.
It's a super.
Right, and it creates no connectivity.
Right, no, it's just going to the one that we had deferred, that's why we put it in there.
And that's a landscaping place out there, right?
Correct, now let's walk in there.
Very long.
They just, that's what they just brought in there.
Right.
Yeah.
I would, yeah.
And, and believe it or not, um, I have access to the Strava data, it's a workout app that people track where they run and bike and everything. And our, probably our most heavily traveled road by runners is Pagan Road. Which has no sidewalks, nothing. And that has probably the most foot traffic on it from a working out point of view, cause it's a quiet road that.
Having like more limited traffic.
Or.
It's kind of heavy traffic on it with the, with the.
So like the, the people that are exercising and working out, they're gonna go to the roads that they feel safe on.
Sure.
I think for the most part, we should drive to the people that don't, they're not working out, they're not walking to workout, they're walking to get somewhere.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good thing, we'll, we'll kind of scope back the map and, and get back to it. Now, the language, and then we'll get going here. Um, I gave you the first half of the, the sidewalk ordinance, section one would change just because of schematics, semantics.
The way they work for me.
Hey, you know, you're always sitting further to.
Do you guys have the sheets in front of you? Cause if you do, I'll, I'll put her on the lights.
Oh, there you go. Yes.
So section two, they really don't change at all. Section three, our bonding requirements are actually working really well, I don't see any need to change it. So looking at section four, the requirement for sidewalks. So currently, and I have it struck out what's there now and I've read what we would look to add. So right now, it's required for land developments within the B one, the commercial districts. So we would revise it to be required in any land development, which abuts anywhere on the official map, cause that's where we're going with, hopefully with this map that we're looking at, be incorporated in the official transportation map. So any property that would abut, that would be required to put in sidewalks. So we get rid of the whole zoning thing, we, we go with, this is where we want sidewalks, this is where they need to go. So that would help with getting rid of a lot of these deferrals, cause they would go where we want that. Now, section B here, um, new public streets and major subdivisions, land developments, so like the areas like the Dollywell property on Oliver Road, if you're putting in a major subdivision, you have to put in sidewalks. And then number C. This is language from the second class township code. The township has the, the right for the second class township code to go to any property that we deem the sidewalks are necessary, tell that person they have to put in sidewalks and then they have to put them in. So. You want me to read through this? This is probably like the, the scariest part of the ordinance and where you guys don't read it.
So if they fail to construct, then the township lay out and construct.
Yeah.
And then.
And I kind of stole this verbiage, I, I revised it, but I, I stole the, the gist of it from the Mill Creek ordinance and the City of Erie ordinance. And if you look at Mill Creek and City of Erie, they're not going out and telling everyone who abuts an area where there should be sidewalk, put in sidewalk. I think we have it in there, so we have the option to do it, especially if in the future we get a lawsuit that says you need to have walkability from here to point A to point B. And we have a means that we can go back to the property owners and say, okay, guys, you got off with not having a sidewalk for twenty years, it's time to put it in.
Yeah.
And, and then the berm's not on the township to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put in sidewalk. That, that is a small portion of the community.
Yeah, and I, I agree, it's, it's a tool, just as long as it isn't viewed as being arbitrary, you know, as enforcement of it is arbitrary. Like in other words, Joe A. has to put in a sidewalk and Joe B. in a simple, in a similar situation.
No.
But, you know.
And I would think that we kind of follow, we've, it's, it's based off the official map, so we can only enforce this on areas that are sidewalk, are already shown on the official map. And I would foresee it that we get this grant to do Peach Street, but we only get it for so much and there's like free gaps. And we go to those property owners, hey, we're doing all this, you guys put in your sidewalks, that way we can have this forward.
But then out of who owns the property just south of St. Wakeley's? That, that's. I guess I, I wouldn't wanna burden that property owner as, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. To me, that doesn't make sense.
And this go to public comment?
I'm sorry, you know.
What's that?
Would this go to public comment?
Yes. Yeah, it's a standard ordinance, so we'd have a public hearing before you guys and before the supervisors, before the adopted.
Yeah, I know, it's painful. It is painful.
And if you're on the other end of that, to have.
I know.
That property.
I know.
And, and have it forced. The economics of it is, is, and especially in, in today's world, where.
Well, if they have to cover all, if they have to cover the total.
Is that, where if isn't in there?
If. I know, I know, but you're gonna, we see a need for sidewalks and then we, we're in the old thing now, well, we can't pay for them and nobody wants to pay for them, so let's not have them. I, I don't know, paying for it sometimes is one of those things that when you get to it, then you start solving the problems. And I, but I, I, if it's open for public comment, you can bet the property owners are gonna be in here. Then again, maybe not, maybe it brings, maybe it brings more business to it, you know, I don't know.
But the other thing is, is the township, it's, it's on the township to put in sidewalks. If we're going through every subdivision, putting in sidewalks, and we've already heard it a little bit, we've done the couple over in five points, well, what about my subdivision?
Yeah.
And that's the thing, we, we did those ones more for a safety aspect, there was a, a perceived danger there. Cause Oliver Road's, it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, but when we put speed counters on there, we're getting people going eighty, ninety miles an hour.
Yeah, well, do you wanna open the map up to public comment?
The map will be open for public comment too. This is actually a twofold process. We're adopt, we're revising the transportation plan, which is another ordinance, so this is actually two ordinances. So we'd be revising that, so that'd be for public comment, that would probably would be step one, we'd put those sidewalks on there. And then step two, whether it be concurrent or separately, would be the adoption of the sidewalk ordinance. So there would be pro, there would be two opportunities for public comment. And we have, we've learned our lessons with the zoning ordinance and we have. We have the Facebook, the websites getting updated, that should hopefully be going live here. I don't know when, but it should be going live in the very near future. And we were looking at other options where people can sign up for text messages if they wanna be notified by the township for things and stuff like that. So we're exploring options and we wouldn't necessarily mail every single person in township like we did with the zoning ordinance. That, that is, that was even cost prohibitive when we did it with the zoning ordinance, but we had to get it right, so we did it anyways. So we'll use the best means we could and then it goes in the paper as well. So I'll give you some time to digest this, I think we just keep talking about it month by month a little bit. Hopefully we'll get a couple agendas that aren't so packed and we can focus more on this. But I appreciate everything you guys. Hopefully, we can get a couple agendas that aren't so packed and we can focus more on this, I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
What about our elected representatives, should they be tuned into this? I mean, if they're gonna have to help us get money for this, shouldn't they be tuned into this somehow, involved in this earlier than later? Is that is that even an option? I mean, Chris, you.
Hey, however you wanna grease that well, it's fine, I mean, that'd be honestly the supervisor's responsibility to give him a shot or, I mean, us as, you know, citizens, I mean, and I think the biggest problem probably Amy and his county has is that citizens don't air it until it's too late.
Yes.
So I, you know, and we're all good together, I think.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, to me, if there's ever needing to reach out, if somebody needs that, and I'm pretty sure Jack and the guys are pretty well connected, if not, I mean, I I know people, I'll be willing to do whatever I can.
I think that's, I think it'd be a great help.
That was good during elections.
Yeah, maybe we need to pound something.
We'll be careful what you ask for sometimes, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Next on our agenda, are we all happy with that?
Yeah, sure, let's continue, I'll I'll update the map, we'll just put the updated map on there and um we'll kinda revisit this if you have any comments or concerns after sitting down and thinking about it for a month. And then maybe I'll have another section for review as well. This is the hardest section of the ordinance, after that, it's mostly technical things and I can just tell you, well, you can't do anything other than this, so.
And the lawyer looks at all this, right?
Yeah, our lawyer will review. Thank you, brother. As as far as comprehensive plan updates, uh we applied for two grants, uh one for a community park to put in a giant uh green township sized playground. Walking trail, uh and then additionally, if they wanna fund it, a restroom facility near the proposed. We were looking at that kinda the intersection, the T where the in the back of the baseball field, by the soccer field, by the rugby field, it's kinda a central location. That way, whatever sport you're there for, you can send your kids off to the playground and you can kinda keep an eye on while you watch the sport. And then the walking trail would kinda go through the wooded area and you'd have connect to the main drives, that way you'd have like a half mile loop.
Great idea.
Here, yeah.
Yes.
And then uh the restroom and then the last thing was a possible lighting for one of the baseball fields. That way they could host some big league, little league baseball game at nighttime.
Do they play out here? I thought everything was played out.
I think they have some games here.
Is there?
Yeah. I've seen them playing baseball here before.
It's been years since I got connected to.
Yeah, and then as far as picnic canna park, we're applying for a grant to get rid of some of the old playground equipment and and put some new stuff in there, kinda revamp it, so we'd have. In that center island, we'd kinda add on and kinda get rid of the spring toys that everybody gets killed on. Anyway, we we get rid of those things and and put out a kind of a small kids, that would go away, but we do a kinda kids, little kids area there between all victim shelters and then back where the death tracking there go around and swings and slide. We turn that into kind of the the older kids play area.
And what what grants are those?
It's uh DCR grants. So we we'll find out probably in the fall whether we got it or not.
Didn't know if you wanted to put those road trails that connect picnic canna and community park together in there too.
Not yet, we have to kinda.
Small steps.
Figure that out, how that's gonna work.
I just.
Cool.
Yep. That's all I have for that.
Next on our agenda is a adjournment?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wow. All, please. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carried, thank you. Let's talk.